Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, June 26, 2017, our final school committee meeting of the 2016-2017 school year. First on tonight's agenda is the acceptance of minutes, and we're looking for a vote on the approval of meeting minutes of June 12, 2017.
So we'll...
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a vote, thank you very much. Second on tonight's agenda, next up under audience, we've got kind of a special night tonight. Every now and again at our school committee meetings, we get the opportunity to honor folks who have performed or done some great things for or on behalf of the Rockland Public Schools. And tonight, we've got kind of a special occasion to do that. We've got two gentlemen that are here with us tonight that we're here to honor that have done quite a bit for Rockland Public Schools and done a lot to make us proud, as well as shaping the lives of many young men and being able to be a great positive role models to so many people and so many young men that have come through Rockland Public Schools and Rockland High School to play football. On April 30 of this year, Coach Ken Owen and Assistant Coach Tom Bailey, both three-time Super Bowl winners here at Rockland High School, were inducted into the Massachusetts High School Coaches Hall of Fame, which is no small feat. It's a really fantastic honor for both of them, and I think for us as a school community, to have those two special guys representing us in the Hall of Fame. Just a little bit about the both of them. Coach Owen has a pretty outstanding record of 193 wins, 103 losses, and three ties. He's won the league championship 11 times, Super Bowl appearances five times, Super Bowl championships three times, undefeated team one time. Honors he's received, he's been the Shrine Game Coach, which for those of you that don't know was more or less the All-Star, All-Star Game for high school football. He's been honored to be the coach of that team for two times. He was Coach of the Year, recognized by Coach of the Year seven times, and he was the Eastern Massachusetts Football Officials Association Coach of the Year. So really proud to have Coach Owen here with us tonight. Also, Coach Tom Bailey, Tom Bailey's here with us tonight. He's been a coach here with Rockland High School for 25 years. At the high school, was a varsity coach and offensive coordinator, one year as an assistant coach at Braintree High School, and one year at Plymouth North. He has four playoff appearances, seven league championships, three Super Bowl championships, and one undefeated season. Really just stellar athletic records, culminating with three Super Bowl wins. So these guys were nominated and accepted into the Massachusetts High School Football Coaches Hall of Fame, and I just thought it was appropriate that as a school committee that we take the opportunity to recognize these guys. What the camera can't see is that here in the audience here tonight is several of the gentlemen that happened to play on those three Super Bowl teams that wanted to be here to honor you two gentlemen tonight, to be here along with us, as well as Mr. Garofalo, who was a member of two of those teams, Mike, is that right?
Yeah.
So we're really happy to have these guys here tonight, and I was asked by Mr. Phelps, Mr. Phelps called me before he left on his family vacation, and asked me to just share some of his thoughts with these guys as well. Mr. Phelps had two sons come up through Rockland High School's football program, not only had successful athletic careers and football careers with these two guys, but to Mr. Phelps' words, were real shapers of those two guys, his son's lives, really made a positive impact on them. And I know, looking out at the crowd right now, that each and every single one of the gentlemen that are here tonight have very similar stories, and I know that there are tens and probably even hundreds of others that feel very much the same way. So as a school committee member of Rockland High School, I'm really proud to honor Ken Owen and Tom Bailey tonight. I must admit that as a Whitman Hansen kid, growing up having to play you guys for so many years, it's a little bit bittersweet on my end. You know, I remember coming over from Whitman Hansen as a kid, as a young age, all the way up through high school, coming over Beech Hill on those long yellow buses, and every time coming over Beech Hill, there was always that little bit of butterflies in the stomach, knowing that what kind of a team we were going to play against. Tough, blue-collar town, but fair, good sports, great kids. And from school committee member and former opponent, congratulations to both of you. We're really proud of you. And I know we do have some things here for you, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to invite Mr. Garofalo in just a second, we're going to step up to the podium. I know Mike has a few words that he wants to share as well, and we've got a plaque that we'd like to present to you, as well as, I know the Dogs Football Fund is, and the gentleman, Mr. McSharry and all those guys have put together a nice gift they have for you as well, which I know was a DVD compilation of all three Super Bowl wins, is that right, Tony?
Yeah.
That's awesome. So gentlemen, if I might invite you up?
They're right over on, I think they're on the podium.
Thank you. So the two plaques that we have, I'll read them both. Certificate of Achievement, this certifies that Thomas Bailey is awarded this certificate in honor of the Massachusetts High School Football Coaches Association Assistant Football Coaches of the Year Award, and it was awarded on the 12th day of June 2017, from us here on behalf of the Rockland School Committee. And we have a certificate achievement that certifies that Ken Owen is awarded this certificate in honor of your induction into the High School Massachusetts Coaches Association 2017 Hall of Fame. And on this day, the 12th of June 2017, of course, this is not the 12th of June, this is the day that these certificates were drafted. So congratulations to the both of you gentlemen. I would like to shake your hands before I cede my time to Mr. Garofalo. Congratulations, thank you both.
All right, so what I have here, I'll do this part first, is shameless plug, my wife is now making t-shirts, and she made a couple t-shirts here that say, "Once a Bulldog, Always a Bulldog," which happened to be 2017's class motto, so I've got one for each of you guys. If they don't fit, let me know, I'll get you... All right, so what I have to say is, Bales, you always rode me to go to the gym because you thought I was too scrawny to block Bobby. Well, I never went to the gym. I always blocked for Bobby. And now I'm not going to the gym, and I'm pretty sure I could definitely block Bobby now.
So could not.
But you always, even when it was skeleton time, you always made sure we were pretending like it was a game, even in the hallways, everything, you made sure we were, and that's very much appreciated. And without that, I don't think much of us here would have accomplished what we did, you know, having that other assistant voice behind the screen, so I want to thank you for all of that.
Thank you, Michael.
Now, Mr. Owen, this is going to be a little sappy, okay? Because I have a draw full of letter of recommendations that you wrote for me, and one of the biggest reasons I am who I am and do what I do today is because I had a coach like you. You know, even from the time you didn't have me in eighth grade, but you knew who I was. And when I got to you as a sophomore, you made sure that I was in class, showing up to practice, in study, watching film, and being the best that I could be. And for that, I thank you, because I wouldn't be half the man that I am today without your leadership over that time in high school. So, an honor well deserved for both of you guys, and I'm proud to say that I had you as coaches, so. This one is yours.
Okay.
And this one is yours. So, and thanks for rearranging your schedules, because I'm the reason why we didn't do it last week, last week, so. If you'd like to...
Want to speak for you?
No, I can speak for myself.
If you could count how many times over the years I've been asked, "How did you ever put up with Mr. Bailey that long?" It's, the answer is pretty high. Anyway, I really, from the bottom of my heart, I truly appreciate this. You know, my job was made so easy for so many years by wonderful people I associated here with, outstanding school committee, outstanding administrators, teachers that we were with here in the building, my family at home, and of course, the wonderful, hard-working, aggressive yet respectful kids that I coached, the young men, and one young lady, over the years, I just take with me. And, you know, I see them here, I see them all the time, so many have remained friends, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much.
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee and Dr. Cron for having us here tonight, it's very much appreciated. I can remember, and I've never told this, but I can remember when I was like 10 or 11 years old, walking up West Water Street on a fall Saturday, kicking leaves, heading to a football game, and for some strange reason, it popped in my head that someday I was going to coach the Rockland Bulldogs. And never in my wildest dreams that I think it would come to fruition, you know, with three Super Bowl championships, an undefeated team, and I even got to be an interim coach for one year when Ken went to watch his son play college football. So that certainly is a life, it's a dream that came true for me, and I really appreciate the opportunity that Rockland gave me. I'm also particularly proud of the fact that according to some of the old timers that are now passed away, I'm the only person since World War II that has coached the football and the boys' basketball team at Rockland, and I'm very proud of that also. So, and to these guys out here, you know, we couldn't have done this without people like you. We had, we had great players for like 10 years, you know. We weren't very good coaches in 1987 or 86, they were all yelling at us and everything, but we became pretty good in 1990, up all the way to the year 2000. So, and it's all a testament to the guys that we had playing for us. And I wish the new coach, Nick, all the best of luck as he takes over the program as a former player, and will be following your story the whole year, Nick. Good luck. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you again, Mr. Owen, Mr. Bailey, for all that you've done for Rockland High School, the town of Rockland, and thanks again for being here with us tonight. It means a lot for us to be able to have the opportunity to honor you guys for all the great things that you've done over the years. Thanks again. Next on tonight's agenda is our superintendent's report, Dr. Cron.
Thank you. Just a little follow-up, Mr. Owen and Mr. Bailey, we talk a lot about excellence, and we talk a lot about success, we spend a lot of time trying to define it, and one of the things that I speak a lot about with kids and also with the administration is this idea of how difficult it is to go from being in the 95th percentile to the 99th percentile. It's fairly easy to get from 60 to 70 to 80, and even up to 90, but the higher you get, the more difficult it is. And it requires character, so I'm so pleased to, that we're recognizing Mr. Owen and Mr. Bailey, because they represent character put together with hard work, put together with being a teacher, and not only were you great and are you great at what you did, but the thousands and thousands of children that you influenced, some of the young men behind you, just profound. I think it's got to be the most profound accomplishment one can have in their life, and I'm really happy for you. And we still get the fruits of your work. So I can't say enough good things about athletics and what it does for our school and the job that Mr. Graziano does and the work that the coaches do. We are, you're a huge part of what Rockland is all about, and I'm just pleased to be here, and thank you, and congratulations to both of you. I'd also like to point out that this year, for the third straight year, the Rockland Athletics, Rockland Athletics has won the South Shore Sportsmanship Award in the South Shore League for three years in a row. It's not a consolation prize, this is our athletes, men and women, and coaches acting with incredible character during some of the most intense interactions kids have within the law, in a school setting. You have people trying physically hurt one another, and they're trying to hurt you, you're trying to hurt them, and at the end of it, how do you behave? I think about our hockey team and the way they handled themselves this year, some very tense matches where people on the other side of the street may not have been playing as nice as we were. And I think that, again, it speaks to character, and I just appreciate it, and I'm very, very proud of Mr. Graziano and all the coaches and the work they do for us, so thank you. And then finally, I just want to thank the teachers, the faculty, staff, families, people who work in my office for putting up with me for an entire year and not throwing me out. It's the end of my first year as superintendent, and it has been, without a doubt, professionally the best year of my entire career. So I just want to thank everyone for that, and that's it for me.
Wonderful, thank you, Dr. Cron. And again, thank you, Coach Owen and Coach Bailey, and all you guys for coming out to be with us tonight, to join us in thanking these guys. I know you guys probably would rather go off and share an apple juice or a glass of milk together somewhere.
Here's some water for you. I got the scotch.
Then sit here and go through the rest of the procedure of the rest of tonight's meeting, so feel free, if you'd like to at this time, to head off, or if you'd like to join us for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to, but don't feel obligated, guys, thanks again.
It's Robert's rules, and it's best.
Yes, it is. Thank you, guys.
Yes, they did, yes, they did, yes, they did, teammates of mine, as a matter of fact, too.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
Congratulations, nice to meet you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations, man.
Thank you.
Michael, hold on, thanks. Thank you very much.
All right, next up on tonight's agenda, under reports, we have financial reports for May. We have five reports for which we'll entertain five motions. From school department, high school activities account, middle school student activities account, cafeteria, and daycare, we do have five motions.
Five seconds.
And five seconds, all those in favor? That is a vote, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Also, under reports, we have 18 reports, monthly reports for June, for the art department, the athletic department, computer technology, daycare, deans, English 5 to 8, English 9 to 12, family consumer science, math 5 to 8, math 9 to 12, music, visual education, radio, science, social studies, special education, middle school, and foreign language. We'll be entertaining eighteen motions.
Eighteen seconds.
And all those in favor?
Roger that.
Those are a vote, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Under old business, we have completed fundraisers, which we have, I believe, three successful, or two, I believe, successful fundraisers that we have to talk about tonight. There were three that were proposed, and one of them was canceled. The Rockland High School Student Government hat sale was canceled, but the Rockland High School Student Government Epilepsy Foundation fundraiser raised $450, while the RHS Student Government sweatshirt sales earned $169. Well done by all. Next on tonight's agenda is the Rockland Daycare Program's parent handbook. This is the second reading. Are there any questions or concerns on, from the committee about the handbook?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? All right, that's a vote, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Under new business, we have summer food service. Dr. Cron, would you like to talk about that? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, we missed one. Under old business, we still have homeless students, enrollment rights, and service policy. This is the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? That's a vote, thank you. And now, under new business, we have summer food services.
And I'm going to turn that over to Assistant Superintendent Goralee.
Okay, I just want to remind the residents of Rockland, and again, this year, we have our summer free lunch service program for the children of Rockland, anyone through age 18 can come for a free lunch, it's a free, full, healthy lunch, and we have four sites this year, this is our third year doing it, Adele London and I started this three years ago, it's a great program. The four sites are Spring Gate Apartments, lunches at 11:00 a.m., Jefferson School, lunches at noon, Potts Park, lunch is also at noon, and a new one this year, we have the Memorial Library, lunch at 1:00 p.m. Have to show up for a free lunch, parents or adults may purchase lunch for $3.75, children through 18 are free, it's a great program, Monday through Thursday, it started today, it goes through August 10. Any questions, call the superintendent's office, and when you see the Rockland Public School Food Service B M pull up, you know, they're coming with some great lunches for you, so enjoy, and any questions, give us a call, thank you.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, be up there tomorrow, thank you.
Yeah, no kidding. My only comment is it's a great program, Adele does a great job, and her whole team does a fantastic job, and it's awesome that they've added the fourth site at the Memorial Library. I encourage all parents to use this, I mean, it's a great time to get your kids down there to socialize with other kids, get them out of the house during the summer and have a healthy meal, and it's free. Thank you for pointing that out, free, that's the big word, it is absolutely free. So motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second, all those in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Next up, for your information, is the Rockland Regional Adult Learning Center 2017 graduation list. For the second year, I've had the opportunity to be there and be a part of the ceremony, and actually, third year, and every year I leave this just feeling so warm in the heart. For those that aren't familiar with it, the Rockland Regional Adult Learning Center is a program that's run right out, right here out of Rockland High School, but does not serve exclusively Rockland adults. This will allow Rockland adults to come back to school to earn their high school diplomas. These are people that for one reason or another or circumstance in their lives, that life brought them away from education during their high school careers, and they've made the conscious decision and choice as adults to come back to earn their high school diplomas. Their parents, they have jobs, they have lives, and they've made the commitment to education to come back and get their high school diplomas, and it's just, really just a great event, and it's such a great program, and I wanted to take a minute to read each and every single one of the graduates' names to recognize them. And please forgive me, I will do my very, very best on the pronunciations. I did practice once or twice before I came, but the names are, and congratulations to each of these ladies and gentlemen, Sidney Ellen Moore, Brittany J. Vicente, Fernanda Oliveira Silva, Maurice A. Ribirio Silva, Marcia Leta Costa, Justin David Naun, Presidential N. Bonsu, Ricardo Mendez Gonzalez Pontes, Corey Michael Melville, Sean S. Foster, Nicholas J. Nason, Gilviana G. Ribiro, Helena Dos Reyes Muniz, Justin A. DeRoche, and Lucia DiCuna Saquera. Congratulations to the 2017 graduates of the Rockland Regional Adult Learning Center. Congratulations, I wish you all the best.
Could you send me the addresses of each one of those people? Do you have them?
Okay, thank you. Next up, under item C, under new business, is the Rockland School Committee Summer Meeting Schedule.
I like this, it's blank.
Yes, I guess we'll have to fill in some spots.
No, no, no.
Dr. Cron, would you like to take over?
When would you like to meet?
September 1st.
I guess we have to pick a date, right?
Yes.
That's all I know.
When do we start school here?
We have...
We start the 28th.
The 28th?
Yeah.
New teachers are coming the week of the...
24th.
May I suggest the 14th?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
For the 14th?
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor of the first school committee meeting being Monday, August 14th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is a vote.
The other thing you're going to need, too, is Donna was saying that you're going to need somebody to sign warrants sometime in July, so just if anybody's not available, let us, let Donna know, you know, to get that done.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'll be available most of the summer, I think, and for others of us, that's all there is, thanks, Tom. Next up, under new business, is the superintendent's evaluation. Just to sort of preface this, I think evaluation in public education is something that has become sort of fundamental to the way we operate. Evaluation of students and learning, evaluation of teachers and how they do their jobs, evaluations of administrators, and yes, even evaluations of superintendents. It is an important job of this committee to evaluate our superintendent, in this case, Dr. Alan Cron. This was Alan's first year as superintendent. I think going into this first year, and sharing what I told Alan previously to this meeting, going into this first year, we were all very confident in the choice that we had made in bringing Dr. Cron on to lead our school district here at Rockland Public Schools, and we had very high hopes for him and the job that he would do here for us. In this committee member's opinion, he has not only met, but exceeded in a lot of ways the goals that he has set for himself, and certainly the expectations that this committee had for him. I was confident going into this year that Dr. Cron was our guy, and I am 100% confident that we made the right choice at this point. I've been really pleased to work with him. In my work with him as a chairman, I found him to be highly communicative, keeps me on the same page with everything that's going on, his phone's always on for me to talk to, I see that his best interest is always for the students, and I'm really excited for things to come, and I think that the evaluations, as I go through them, will reflect my feelings on that. I took some time to aggregate the information that we had, and I will go through and take a couple of minutes and talk a little bit about what some of the committee members had to say and how we rated Alan. At the beginning of the year, we had the opportunity to review and approve some goals that Alan had for his first year as superintendent of schools. The first goal that he had was to lead an inclusive process that will result in the development of a strategic plan for Rockland Public Schools that will guide the school for the next five years. Now, just a comment on that goal, first of all, there are a lot of superintendents that might go their careers and not do a strategic plan, that is an ambitious undertaking, it's one that really, it takes a real comprehensive look under the hood, if you will, to see what we are and where we're going, and Dr. Cron took that on, and in my opinion, did a fantastic job and really hit it out of the park. For that particular goal, the committee agreed that Dr. Cron, one member agreed that he met that goal, and two members agreed that he exceeded that goal. And by the way, on this rating process, the choices were, did not meet, made some progress, made significant progress, met the goal, or exceeded the goal. And by the way, when we say met the goal, that means that the goal was achieved successfully. Alan's second goal was to implement a DESI, a DESI Administrator Evaluation System, with principals, curriculum leaders, and program leaders. On goal two, two members voted that he met that goal, and one member met that he exceeded that goal. For goal number three, to increase computer science, coding, robotics throughout the year, two members voted that, actually, I'm sorry, all three members voted that he met that goal. Number five, published, number four, excuse me, facilitated inclusive, organized, transparent process to maximize Rockland's chances of getting a new elementary school. Four, goal four, one member voted that he met that goal, and two members met that he exceeded that goal. His fifth goal was to publish the district's emergency plan and distribute it to every single classroom. All three, I'm sorry, two members voted that he met that goal, and one member met that he exceeded that goal. Step two of the evaluation process is to assess performance standard, standards. Step two, in standard ones, one was instructional leadership, and the choices on how the committee was able to evaluate Alan was to choose unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. Under instructional leadership, three members voted proficient. Standard two, management and operations, two members voted proficient, and one member voted exemplary. Standard three, family and community engagement, two members voted proficient, and one member voted exemplary. Standard four, professional culture, two members voted proficient, and one member voted exemplary. Overall summative performance, two members voted proficient, one member voted exemplary. Rate of impact on student learning, the choices for the committee were low, moderate, or high, the unanimous choice was that Dr. Alan Cron had made a high impact on student learning. Superintendent's performance goals, we talked... Superintendent's performance goals, we talked about how Alan's goals were to lead an inclusive process that will result in the development of a strategic plan for Rockland Public Schools that will guide it for the next five years, one member voted that he'd met and two members met that he exceeded. I already went over these ones, didn't I? I did, okay. So, district improvement, district improvement, moved you on that. Other goals, published a district emergency plan, we moved you on that, sorry, got repetitive there. Instructional leadership, under curriculum, ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards based on units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. The chances were unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient or exemplary, two members voted proficient, one exemplary. Instruction ensures that practices in all settings reflect high expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work, engage all students in personalized, to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests and levels of readiness. Three members voted proficient. Assessment ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth, understanding, and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. Three members voted proficient. Evaluation ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions, two members voted proficient and one member voted exemplary. Data-informed decision-making, uses multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district and school assessment results and growth data to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performance, educator effectiveness and student learning. Two members voted proficient and one member voted exemplary. Overall rating of standard one was, two members voted that standard one was proficient and one member voted that it was exemplary. So I would say that standard one was a marked success for Dr. Cron and the evaluation. Standard two was under management and operations. Environment develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional and social needs. Two members voted proficient and one member exemplary. Human resources management and development, implements a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development and career growth that promotes a high quality of effective practice. Two members voted proficient and one exemplary. Scheduling and management information systems, uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning and collaboration, minimizing disruptions and distractions for school-level staff. Three members voted proficient. Law, ethics and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws, mandates school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements and ethical guidelines, two members voted proficient and one member exemplary. Fiscal systems, develops a budget that supports the district's vision, mission, goals, allocates and manages expenditures, consistent district and school-level goals and available resources. Two members proficient and one member exemplary. Overall rating for standard two, two members proficient and one member voted exemplary. Standard three for family and community engagement, engagement actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school district and community. Three members voted proficient. Up next, sharing responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support community and student learning and development at home, school and in the community. Two proficient and one exemplary. Communication engages in two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning performance. Three members voted proficient. Family concerns adjusts, excuse me, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective and efficient manner. Two members voted proficient and one exemplary. Overall rating for standard three, where three members voted proficient. Standard four, professional culture, committed to high standards, fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching and learning with high expectations and achievement for all. Two members voted proficient and one exemplary. Cultural proficiency ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths and challenges are all respected. Two proficient and one member voted exemplary. Communication demonstrates interpersonal, written and verbal communication skills. Two members voted proficient and one member voted exemplary. Continuous learning, develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are relative about their practices, reflective about their practices and use student data, current research, best practices and theory to continuously adapt, practice and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his own practice. Two members voted proficient and one exemplary. Shared vision, successfully and continually engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in a post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. One member voted proficient and two members voted exemplary. Managing conflict, employs strategies to responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict and building consensus throughout the district or school community. Two voted proficient and one voted exemplary. But I thought we didn't have any disagreements in Rockland Public Schools, so, okay. But nonetheless, the overall rating for...
Exactly. That's why, that's why they're exemplary.
Yes, exactly. The overall rating for standard four was two voted proficient and one exemplary. Just wanted to share some comments that members shared about Dr. Cron and their evaluation. First, overall, very happy with your first-year performance. Another, Alan as a first-year superintendent is top-notch. His push for a new school and a new cohesive elementary curriculum have been second to none. His focus on driving our system into the future and into this newly competitive market for schools is impressive. Alan's entry findings have been a real eye-opener. I'm impressed with his love for our town and belief that Rockland is better than many believe. In the short term, that I've had the pleasure to work with Alan, he has done nothing but impress me. He believes that our kids are the most important in the world and is all that what matters. I look forward to many years of working together. Another, Dr. Cron, in his first year as superintendent, made great strides in the areas of community engagement. Alan has fostered an atmosphere of transparency and cooperation with community stakeholders, particularly in areas where an atmosphere, where such an atmosphere did not previously exist. Dr. Cron has also been thus far very effective in collaborating with other stakeholders in an effort to build a new elementary school for the town of Rockland. Alan has identified consistency and shared educational vision as a district-wide priority. Results have been immediate and effective. Dr. Cron's leadership and guidance through the process of creating and implementing a district-wide strategic plan are commendable. So those are just a few of the comments that were shared, and I know that that was a huge mouthful that I just read, but I wanted to read all of it because I think it's important for people to understand the level of time and thought that are put into these evaluations and to review Dr. Cron and to make sure that things are, from this committee's perspective, are going as our community would hope that they would. As school committee members, it's our job, as the representatives of our district and our town, to make sure that things in our schools are going the way that the town wants them to, and I'm happy to report from this committee member's perspective that they very much are. I've been very excited and very pleased about the results of the first year, I think that these results speak to that and reinforce that. So, after all that, I'm ready for a drink of water.
And I have some...
And I know that some other committee members would like to say.
First of all, I'd like to apologize, I was late getting it in, so Dan didn't get a chance to roll mine up, you probably got a few more in October there. One of the things that the, that really stood out with me was your strategic plan, putting together the plan, but also the, the people that got involved. Very proud, very happy, very ecstatic about that. And you brought it to a new level, you know, I just like that, you know, it's just, it's just really, well. Also, the other level that I'd like to, you know, talk to, is the, your relationship with the rest of the town officials. You know, I, at times, and Dick will probably, you know, agree with me, it's a long time ago, that relationship was, was not the best. And, and I know that your predecessor, John, worked on that, but I, I've seen a big, even a bigger improvement over this last year, as far as working with them. And, and you know, my last comment, I'm glad we hired you.
Thank you.
You're here.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the committee?
Obviously, it's only been a short few months, but leading up to my turn at this table, I've been keeping a close eye and was very happy with the choices that were made, bringing you in and everything I've seen since then. I can't convey into words how good of a job I think you were doing for this town.
Thank you.
That's all I can really...
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Well, I'm fully embarrassed.
It worked.
Thank you, and I have all kinds of people that keep me out of trouble, but again, we have great people in the district, so. I said this to Dan before, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else, I'm thrilled to be here and looking forward to the work we have had, we have a lot of work, very exciting time.
Well, they say that great results breed great expectations, so we will be watching you, make sure you keep this up.
Absolutely.
Great job, thanks so much. Next on tonight's agenda is approval of fundraisers. We've got some good fundraisers to approve tonight. The preschool pack has three of them, one of them is raffle tickets for February and March, one of them is a silent auction in November, and one of them is a cookie dough, cookie dough sale in September, so I'll make sure I'm paying attention in September.
Right.
Rockland High School, the boys soccer team has four fundraisers, we have a ninety-nine Dining for a Cause in August, a raffle in August, donation letters in July, an open house and clinic in August. So altogether, we have seven fundraisers for approval tonight.
Seven emotions to approve.
Seven seconds.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
That's a vote, thank you very much. Next on tonight's agenda...
The only comment I'd like to make about these is that getting them before, you know, is, this seems to be working really well.
A little, yeah.
Yes, I agree.
They still come in last minute and we, we don't want to hold someone up, but we're trying to...
Yeah.
Remind folks.
Next on tonight's agenda, personnel information for May and June, it's a lengthy list being the end of the year, anything that you'd like to comment on, Dr. Cron?
No, just, you know, summer school, a lot of summer school appointments, thank you very much to all of our retirees and to those of the folks who have moved on, very excited about all the new people that we've brought on at the end of the year. In a district our size, we're not a tiny district, you have a lot of people that come and go, so.
Yeah.
I think we're, we're in very good shape for next year.
Very good. Next up on tonight's agenda, public service announcements. Dr. Morrow Small.
I have. Public service announcement?
Yeah, you get to give a comment or an end of the year, if anything you want to, kind of like a free-form comment.
I feel bad that happened to me.
No, you totally don't get to put me on the spot.
Okay, all right, that's all right.
That's not how this works.
All right, Mr. Garofalo, go ahead.
All right, so, I have one, it's, I had the privilege of this weekend spending it Friday, Saturday and Sunday in the Nishoba Valley Olympia ice rink for the District One Figure Skating ISI Championships. That encompasses all of New England, that district, and I am proud to say that the Winterland Skating School, based out of Rockland, right at the Rockland rink, took first place and won the district championship by doubling up what second place had in points. What I like about this is that, I was just doing a quick count, and I'm sure I have forgotten some girls, so please, no moms getting mad at me. I got about fifteen girls from Rockland that were out there this weekend competing and all did well. One of the lead coaches is a RHS graduate, Megan Morrissey, and the way they teach these girls, young ladies, they make them all about their team. And that they support each other, they support the other schools, the other schools were supporting the other schools, and if we could get more of that everywhere, I think things would get a lot better. So, I just want to congratulate the school yet again on an amazing run this year, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garofalo, Mr. Mills.
Summer's here, school's over, but one of the things I'd like to just, you know, reinforce is that, get some things to do over the summer, get them done, reading, do it over a little bit of time here, a little bit of time there, and have a safe, healthy summer and see you back here in September.
Thank you very much. And for me, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Garofalo and Dr. Morrow Small, I'm excited about serving with each of you, it's great to have new members on and new perspectives, and we're looking forward to next year and working together again. Summertime's here, please everyone be safe, enjoy your summers, we're looking forward to seeing everybody back here, safe and sound in September, ready to learn, and just as we finish up this school year, I just want to take a moment again to thank Dr. Cron, all the administrators here in Rockland Public Schools, teachers, paraprofessionals, cafeteria staff, maintenance, who am I forgetting? Custodians, drivers, everybody, I mean, I know this...
Snow shovel.
Snow, every, police, fire, everybody, it takes, it takes a village to quote a particular person of a, served in politics in times back, it takes a village, it truly does, and we, in our particular village, are truly blessed. We've got a lot of people in Rockland Public Schools that make this whole thing tick, and it really ticks well, our kids are lucky to go to school in a town like this. Two of my three kids are already here, the third one coming, and I couldn't feel better about sending my kids to Rockland Public Schools. So thank you to everybody who makes that atmosphere happen. Please, I hope all of you enjoy your summers, well-deserved breaks, for those of you that have them, and we're looking forward to seeing everybody back in September. So with that, I would entertain...
Motion to adjourn.
...a motion to conclude our regularly scheduled school committee meeting to retire into executive session, not to reconvene for the purpose of discussing personnel. Tom?
Aye.
And Dr. Small?
No, aye.
Derek?
Aye.
And I. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, have a safe summer, and we'll see you in September. Bye-bye.